It's a quarter. Please call the roll.
Harris?
Present.
Carlson? Olson?
Here.
Seaberton?
Here.
West?
Here.
Woodhouse?
Here.
Zingy? Here.
Everybody's here but Deanne, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. All right, communications. We've got up budget update sixteen through twenty-three. The only one that doesn't have a motion, I believe, is twenty-two. And, oh, there's a budget update number one for KPU which has no motion also, thank goodness. And, um, and then we have another update. Number, oh, is that it? Number two, okay. And twenty-two, okay, we got them all. All right, that brings us down to persons to be heard. Russell, you wanted to make a statement first?
Yes, sir.
The podium is yours.
Mayor Williams and city council members, I'd like to make a brief statement addressing an issue that was brought to my attention today. A document is being circulated which to some would appear to be a court document. It is neither an official court document nor a finding of facts in any legal sense. Some have made assumptions based upon this internal document, none of which have a basis in fact, nor resulted in any legal actions against me. I'm seeking legal counsel for guidance on how best to address this issue as to not further disturb the work I am to do here. Thank you fellow council members and Mayor Williams for giving me the opportunity to make this statement. I regret that this issue may have taken away from city council time, and I would like to get on with the business at hand.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list, Agnes, come on up.
Agnes Moran, three twenty-seven South Wayne Higgins Road, and I am speaking here as a member of the community. Every Sunday at three o'clock down at the Episcopal Church, the churches in this community take turns and they prepare a meal, a hot meal, for anyone in the community who's in need of a hot meal. The church that I'm affiliated with serves the fourth Sunday of the month. And I've been doing this, I was trying to talk to my husband, we've been doing this probably roughly four years, between three and five years, so we've been doing it for an established period of time, on the fourth Sunday of the month. And when we started four years ago, we would plan for twenty-five meals, we expected to see between fifteen, eighteen, maybe twenty people, and we always fed people until they were, until we ran out of food. We were sure we had some for folks to take in to shut in, so we always planned for more. On the fourth Sunday of November, we served forty-two people. We had forty-two people walk through our door. And we have gone from planning on having thirty meals on the fourth Sunday of a month, we now plan for seventy meals. Because that forty-two people does not include probably four or five elderly that we just set aside food for, it doesn't include the folks who show up and say so-and-so's sick they couldn't make it today. And again, we serve until we run out of food. And last on, this last month, we served over, we served close to seventy meals, it was sixty to sixty-five meals. And we've been doing this, and so in four years, we've gone from planning, we stayed the same Sunday of the month, and of course, we, we look at the Sunday where, we're on the Sunday where a lot of people, it's the end of the month and they've run out of money before they've run out a month, all right? And now if you take a look at the population in our schools, over fifty percent of the children in our schools qualify for free and reduced lunch. So for the families of over fifty percent of the kids that are enrolled in school in this community, qualify, have an economic base that qualifies them for their kids to re, to receive free and reduced lunch. And now when you raise the sales tax, the people who are hit hardest by an increase in the sales tax, and you guys are looking at an eight percent increase overall, the people who are hit hardest are the people on the low-income portion of our society. And so when you're balancing your budget, you're balancing your budget by reaching into the pockets of folks who already are having a very difficult time balancing their budgets. Because it's a proven fact over and over again that when you're on the lower end of the economic spectrum, a greater percentage of your income is spent on essentials, essentials being food and shelter. And I can guarantee you that if you guys raise the sales tax by eight percent, that my numbers on the fourth Sunday of the month down at the Episcopal Church will go up much greater than eight percent. And I don't want to see another double in a year, because these people are being fed without any government subsidy at all. These churches and their members are reaching into their own pockets to feed these folks. And so I'd like you to take that into consideration. I appreciate that you're having serious budget issues, but there's a big section of this community that has serious budget issues of their own, and I hate to see you balance your budget on out of their pockets. Thank you.
Thanks, Agnes. Any questions for Agnes? Thank you very much. Tim Walker?
Hello.
Hey, Tim.
I'm here representing the Ports and Harbor Advisory Board, and I was asked to bring a recommendation to the board concerning the raw fish tax and the drive-down flow. So at the monthly meeting of the Ports and Harbor Advisory Board last night, the, the noun and, sorry, recommendation was for the raw fish tax to remain as it's currently budgeted, with a hundred percent going to the repayment of the loan from the Economic and Parking Development Fund for the city's portion of the funding for the construction of the di, drive-down flow. Pulling out the fish tax money will delay the repayment of the loan, and the consequence of that delay will push out the needed capital improvement projects. The community inherited the harbors with a significant amount of deferred maintenance. The community has been addressing the issue of the deferred maintenance and the deferred capital improvement projects by utilizing grants, bonds, and by increasing the harbor rates. There was a seven percent increase of the rates this year, and there's another seven percent planned for 2014. Pulling any of the fish tax money from the drive-down flow will extend the debt burden of the project from four out to eight years. Carrying the debt for an additional four years would jeopardize the ability to win future grants, squelch any willingness, willingness, um, the community to continue to fund harbor projects. A walk on the hole-in-the-wall dock makes the need for capital improvement projects obvious. It's proof that deferring maintenance and capital improvement projects eventually create an urgent unplanned and unaffordable expense. The Ports and Harbor Advisory Board recommends that the fish tax funding not be cut from the drive-down flow. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We've got questions, Matt?
Tim, I have a question. Um, there was, it was, fishing season was phenomenal this past year. Odds are the raw fish tax is going to be substantially higher. Is it, and maybe you guys didn't discuss this, are you going to, are you, is the plan that you guys are hoping to utilize all of that money this year to make additional payments to it, or are you hoping to bank that money for future projects?
We didn't know what the money was going to be. We knew that it was going to be more. The feeling was is that it took so long to get the raw fish tax to fund, uh, the port, well, actually the harbors, the port seems to be doing quite well. We didn't want to see it go away. We discussed allocations, you know, fifty percent, seventy-five percent. The fear was is that if any of it went, it would all go. We wanted to go back to the people that pretty much fed the tax.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
Next, Rodney Dial.
Hello, my name's Rodney Dial. I own a home and property at six eighteen Water Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family tonight. I'm here to ask that you not raise property taxes again. I'm also going to ask that you not raise our water rates, sewer rates, and electrical rates again, or raise the sales tax. I read in the November sixteen article in the Ketchikan paper regarding Carl Amalon's request for more taxes, and to me, it comes across as nothing more than scare tactics and political cover for this assembly to heap yet again more increases on the citizens of this community. The interesting thing about this article is that it contains no new creative ideas for savings, just cuts to maintain the status quo. Anyone willing to think outside the box can quickly come up with ways to save, for example. We currently have two museums open during the winter, Totem Heritage Museum, our center, and Tonga's Historical Museum, and personally, I didn't even know about the Totem Heritage Center until I started looking into the budget, and I've been here a long time. My question to you is how many people do you think paid to enter either of these museums today? Or will this winter? That we maintain these facilities open year-round, I think is absurd. If both were closed in the winter and the admission fee was raised to five dollars in the summer, we could save significant funds and the public wouldn't even notice the difference. How about reducing the number of crossing guards we employ in the summer? Why is it that every major tourist destination in this country can do without crossing guards, utilizing walk, don't-walk signs, but we have a small army of workers with stop signs during the summer? Isn't this why the city council spent a hundred thousand dollars on a pedestrian wayfinding study to learn how to construct barriers so that people would use crosswalks? How about asking the fire department not to drive a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar fire truck to medical calls? One of the reasons that you've considered replacing it for the last few years is because it's driven to non-fire calls and it has an extremely high operating cost. There's no need to drive expensive fire truck to medical calls. They can put their equipment in a more cost-effective vehicle for transport and extend the useful life of a very expensive vehicle. I think you also need to end the legislative party in Juneau. No more smoke, brie, shrimp, and free alcohol for the city of Juneau. Other southeast towns do just fine on their capital budgets without throwing a party each year at taxpayer expense. We need to reduce funding to the nonprofits and community agencies. You've allowed groups to come before you for years and make wild claims about all the good they do and not require a shred of, shred of proof, performance measures, audit, or cost-benefit analysis. The community agencies that can fund themselves need to do so. Why does no one have the courage to ask Ketchikan Arts and First City Players how much they'd have to raise their ticket prices to offset taxpayer funding? With all the plays, events, such as the wearable arts festival, what, maybe a dollar? You can add, why can't they ask their users for an extra dollar, but you will raise the taxes of your citizens again to pay for their special interests? Do you remind them of the tens of thousands of in-kind donations they get each year from the taxpayers for their tax-exempt status, zero property tax? How much yearly revenue was lost when fireside building left private hands and went to First City Players? Why can't some of the community, community agencies be expected to focus more on fundraising? There are plenty of ways to cut the budget and ask individual departments to find savings. If your city manager is telling you there is no fat that can be cut from government, then I think you need to find a new city manager. What was very troubling in the newspaper article was a statement that the city has to pay debt service towards a number of bonds, and starting in 2014, that debt service will also include payments for the medical center expansion. The voters were clearly told by many supporters that the KGH expansion would be paid for with the existing hospital sales tax. This turns out not to be true, the public is deceived into thinking that this could be funded with existed revenue, uh, there's going to be a lot of very upset people in this community. When you wonder why you don't have the reserves that you wish you had at this point, let's consider some of the wasteful spending the city has done over the last few years. Hundred thousand for an employee wage survey, hundred thousand dollars for a pedestrian wayfinding survey, one point two million for library plans never used, fifty thousand dollar increase in the operating budget due to the new library building being built and the continued operation of this Centennial Building, break room renovations, city hall renovations, I think the voters would have said no to that, eleven thousand to install automatic flushers on city toilets, hundreds of thousands for various art projects, over five million to community agencies since 2006, with non-essential community funding around three hundred dollars per year per household now, thousands per year for the annual legislative party, seven thousand dollar assessment for Harborview Park, seven thousand dollars starts, uh, Ketchikan Arts to solicit bids for a rain gauge. Just so you know, the taxpayers feel that our current rain gauge is sufficient. How long do you think that thing would have remained operational in the dock until some drunk climbed on it and broke it, or some juvenile with a pellet gun shot a hole in it? What budget was going to fund the operating costs for maintenance and electricity? And it's just another example of nickel and diming the budget's death. We're not buying the justification that some of the items I mentioned are paid for with cruise ship passenger funds. As we all know, that money can be used to offset other tourist-related spending from the general fund. There are examples of waste. How much tax revenue have you lost by building a fire station on the most valuable piece of property in the city? Twenty, thirty thousand per year forever? How much are we losing each year with all the nonprofits that have tax-exempt property downtown? How much sales tax will the city lose when Oceans Alaska becomes a tourist destination taking thousands of tourists out of the city area for good portions of their stay? We need to consider those things, and we're supporting endeavors that are going to reduce revenues to city coffers. Let's talk about what's happened over the last few years with spending, and everything I'm about to say comes from the Ketchikan Daily Newspaper. In 2006, property tax assessments increased between ten and twenty-five percent. In Ketchikan, a proposed half-cent sales tax to renovate White Cliff failed two to one. And I think that was an example of what the voters think about discretionary spending and raising taxes to fund the nonprofits. In 2007, city and KPU budgets totaled over a hundred million, and that includes a fifteen percent increase in water utility rates. That, that was the year that we spent money for Harborview Park, a hundred thousand dollars to study employee wages, uh, council that year awarded seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in grants to seventeen nonprofit groups, uh, council approved a plan to solicit a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the public art proposals. Two thousand and seven editorial reads, Ketchikan Gateway Borough Property Tax Assessments are going up again this year, with many residential assessments increasing up to fifteen percent, and commercial land and condominiums going from twenty to thirty-five percent. Clover Bay, Moser Pass, and Loring areas will receive land adjustments up to twenty percent, but it's also a big difference based on wages. It's more than a half-day's work before taxes at the fifteen-dollar-an-hour salary of an entry-level boat ride. For a bakery sales clerk making seven twenty-five an hour, that represents twelve hours of work before taxes are taken out. So that clerk will have to work more than a day and a half to pay the difference. It's a big difference, and it's a difference that just keeps on coming. A scan of some tax records indicates that a single-family home on the north end, without improvements and not on the water, has gone up in value by nearly sixty-eight percent since the assessment in 2002 to 2007. Sixty-eight percent. Do you think the citizens had a sixty-eight percent pay increase between 2002 and 2007? The editorial goes on to say, "We can't afford to chase all the working people out of Ketchikan and leave it to the rich folks from down south looking for a new next location to take over." One pe, one way people get chased out is when taxes are too high for the people who have lived here and keep living here. The editorial says, "At some point, our leaders have to draw a line." Some people getting tax bills won't line up the lectern Monday evening to beg the assembly not to raise their tax increase, worse, by keeping the mill rate the same. Some of them will be working their second or third job when the assembly meeting begins at five-thirty PM. Others will be too tired from having already put in twelve hours by then, with the need to make dinner and hear about the kids' day taking priority. Still others will be too discouraged to attend, they feel unheard and invisible. Borough and school district officials must figure out how to give children the best public school education possible with the money available without declaring more money available by raising taxes yet again." Those were the exact words of the editorial in the paper on June ninth, 2007. Since that editorial, we've had two property tax increases, and many, many water, sewer, electrical, garbage, and assessment rate increases since then. Our property taxes were the highest in southeast Alaska back then, and now are more than double in places like Sitka. I have to ask, why do you have such contempt for the businesses that are trying to compete regionally with the other communities in southeast Alaska? In 2009, a KDN article, "City Council on Thursday Will Consider Keeping City's Property Tax Rate at Six Point One Mils," the level at which the city's 2009 budget was based. However, because property assessments announced in May were higher than the city anticipated when the budget was approved in December, six point one mils will bring in about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand more than budget. Also in that year, you increased electrical rates two point one percent, you increased the sales tax cap to two thousand. In 2011, city budget calls for spending a hundred and seven, a hundred and seven million, which is ten million more than in 2010. And of course, for the last two years, property tax increases and more utility increases, and we just learned a few weeks ago that property assessments are going up by another five point six percent. That means since 2002, which is eleven years, assessments have increased by nearly a hundred percent on the average home. Inflation has increased during the same time by just under thirty percent. This meaning in real dollars, we're paying a significantly higher amount of our disposable income in local, in go, local government taxes, and that was before the last pass to property tax increases. This increase gets passed on through every good and service locals purchase on this island. All of these tax and utility increases really point to a serious disconnect between local government officials, many of whom live quite comfortably, and some of which advocate for higher sales and property taxes while claiming senior citizen exemptions. They have no skin in the game. City manager, the constant yearly advocate for ever-increasing spending and more taxes, has received more in just salary increases since 2005 than the average young person makes an entire year working in our local tourist-related low-wage job. How can he be expected to understand how difficult it is for our young people to simply afford rent when his raises are more than what they make in a year? And I don't have anything personally against you, sir, but it's just, it seems like every time I open the paper, you're advocating for a tax increase. And I, I remember when the, we needed bridge work, you wanted a sales tax increase then. Um, you know, I, I think you're a competent man, and you probably do a good job for the council, but, you, you know, the citizens are going to fit up with that. Even if you do not raise taxes or utility rates, citizens will soon be hit with an assessment increase nearly three times the rate of inflation. Rent's going to cost more, food, fuel will cost more, now our young people are also expected to pay more for their health insurance to subsidize older, less health, uh, less healthy people. And I'm almost done. We will give our youth that great education that people like Mr. Olson and Ms. West advocate for, but then wave goodbye to them when they leave Ketchikan because they can't afford to live here. Taxpayers demand more consideration than the groups that come before you with their hands out, asking for more taxpayer money year after year. It's not a matter of if you have to cut, only when you realize that you must do so. You can ignore the reality that your citizens cannot afford more increases, but you can ignore the consequences of ignoring reality. If it takes a citizen's initiative to hold the line on spending and taxing because you don't have the courage to make the hard choices, then that's where we're heading. I ask for no tax increases, thank you.
Any questions for Rodney? Thank you, sir. All right, that was all the three that were signed up tonight. Is there anybody else wants to address the council tonight? CNN will move into the budget. And let's tackle all the updates first. Carl, we started sixteen, correct?
Just correcting, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, hold on, let me find my starting spot. Twenty-one, oh yeah. Seventeen, 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 sixteen. Go ahead, Matt.
Move the city council approved changes to 2014 general government operating and capital budget by increasing appropriation in the museum department grant program furniture and fixtures account number seven one five zero zero by eighty-eight hundred dollars and increasing intergovernmental revenues reflected in the general fund by the same amount.
Second. Moving to second. Matthew, do you want to add anything?
No, sir.
Okay, statement, museum association grant. Call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Zingy?
Seaberton? Yes.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Woodhouse?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing. How about seven? We got another grant.
Your honor.
I mean, seventeen. Go ahead.
City council approved changes to 2014 general government operating and capital budget by increasing appropriations in the police department grant program overtime account number five oh one point oh one by three thousand dollars, and the machinery and equipment account number seven twenty-five zero zero by thirty thousand dollars and increasing intergovernmental revenues reflected in the general fund by thirty-three thousand.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving second. Matthew, you want anything?
Uh, just clarify, this is grant funds received last year that were not used and were transitioning to this year.
Call the roll.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Woodhouse?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Matt passes six to nothing. That brings us to update number eighteen, fire department grants. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
Move the city council approved changes to the 2014 general government operating and capital budget by increasing appropriations in the fire department grant programs detailed in finance directors memorandum dated December ninth, 2013, and increasing intergovernmental revenues reflecting in the general fund by forty-five thousand dollars.
Moving to second, anything you want to say?
I think it's the same thing as last.
Call the roll.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Woodhouse?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. That brings us down to nineteen, replacements on Centennial Building roof. Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
Move the city council amend the museum department's 2014, 2018 CIP by deleting the Centennial Building roof repair project in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars and adding the Centennial Building roof replacement roof project in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, and reduce in the beginning reserves of the public work sales tax fund at forty-four thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving to second. And Matt?
Your honor, I actually have a question on this one, or a concern. I've been raising it a little bit this week, and I've raised it in the past. This is a building that is in desperate need of repair and renovation. I know we don't have an election coming up, but I'm wondering if we need to do an advisory election on what the public wants to do with this building, and whether or not we should put any more substantial funds into it. And I guess I'm just putting it out there as a thought at this point. I wasn't going to make a motion, but I'm, I'm concerned that this is just the start of us putting a million into it and then trying to decide if we want to do it. I'd rather decide it first.
Well, I wanted to keep standing, but it's not a deal.
Yeah, no, I, I know, I just, it's just a good time to have the discussion.
Carl, can you explain the funding on this?
This particular project, Mr. Mayor, would be funded out of public work sales tax reserves. Regarding the issue that council member Olson raised, last January, we had a work session regarding the museum, and at that time, we outlined a number of improvements that were going to be required to rehabilitate or stabilize that building. Council opted not to take any action. Once the first of the year comes, we will be bringing back an update to that report and trying to give you a handle on the investment that's going to be required over the next couple of years if you want to maintain that building as a museum. If at that time, we want to put it out to the voters for an advisory referendum, certainly can opt to do that.
Marty, then, Matt?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Matt. I mean, that's, it's a, a pretty prime piece of real estate, and there may be some value to it in the private sector, and there may be some possibility of expanding the Heritage Center to become the, the museum. And Matt and I went on a, on a tour of it recently, and it's got, there's some substantial problems over there, and not, uh, the least of which is the, the lack of ADA compliance for bathrooms and a lot of other things, too. It's, it's a beautiful spot, and it would be, it's, it makes a beautiful museum, and I, I think we might need to think, think some other thoughts about this, too.
Matt, then, you thought?
Couple of things. One, there's going to be an election in October, first standard. What, how much would it be to put a question like this on the?
On the October, would it?
Yeah.
It wouldn't cost any more than what it already costs.
Okay, all right, so we don't need to allot any more from the courts for that, okay. And I, going through the library process in building the new library, we had extensive discussions and research and public feedback and public information just from people who, who had people who, who had lived here and watched the Centennial Building get built. I learned an awful lot about that building and it is a, it's, it's a building that's important to our community. I have, I mean, as I've explained several times, I have emotional ties of going there as a child and trying to count old growners' bullet holes, you know, and in the museum. So I, I, I do, I don't wanna see the building go away, but I also know we're looking at minimum of six, potentially up to nine, just to renovate that building, nine million. And, um, whether or not we want the public to fund it or we, you know, whatever, wanna keep it, whether we want the public to fund it, whether we want to hand it over or sell it to a, a private entity that can then use the building, you know, renovate it and use it and bring it up to standard and, and use it for their interest. Whatever we wanna do, that I think, I think this question, especially as we sit here and we talk about budgets, is one that we probably need to refer back to, to the people.
Bob?
Um, one of the things I'm gonna do here in a minute is ask Cliff to come up and explain why we're doing the change in the roofing process. I had some concerns because if we are gonna keep the building, the intent would probably be put a peak roof on it, high enough that we could put an air handrail in it and stuff going forward in the future. We had the library discussions in regards to the Centennial Building. There were very passionate argument about keeping that building and utilizing it. If we even, if we were to turn around and sell it, I think the cost of us building another museum someplace else, um, is gonna be more expensive. I think the location, I think the museum has the potential of, um, generating some revenue in the summer months, not necessarily do I think it's gonna cover all of its costs. But I think that there is the ability there, um, once it's renovated. And I don't know what the renovations are, are gonna cost, but I'm not, I think, um, looking at a large amount of money, um, to bring it up to something that, uh, I guess doesn't look like it is today. I think there are things that need to be done to make it functional. I think there's things that need to be done to make it, uh, uh, attractive and, and usable for the museum staff to put their exhibits out. Uh, but, um, I'm a little concerned about going overboard on this thing when we do the renovation. I think it's a process that we can take some time with. I know the borough has talked about, uh, uh, adding funds to make a, uh, a bathroom renovation in that building. We have talked about that in the past. Uh, I think there's some, uh, things that we can do jointly to, to help, uh, make the, uh, tourist visit here in that building and downtown bathrooms and centralized area effective. So, um, I'm not sure I'm looking for a new building and I don't think I'm looking for a, a huge investment and I'm, you know, thinking around the ten million dollar mark in the near future into that building. I think we need to fix the roof, fix the lighting, look at our heating system and, and work on it in a, in a manner over a number of years and get it so that we can utilize the facility as it is.
My second, Bob. Judy?
I also toured the museum and I went during the day. They took me around. I, if I would've privately owned that building, I probably would've shut it down until it was safer for people to work there, is what I felt about it. But to me, nine million dollars for a museum? I mean, I realize I'm new here, but that's a lot of big money. And I just don't, artists don't see us spending all this money. I think Matt's suggestion is a good one, that we let people vote on it. We keep building these things and then people come back and tell us how angry they are. So maybe they should have a say in it, too.
Go ahead, Bob.
Cliff, could you come up and tell us the situation with the roof? Like, you know that we started out looking at a patch and it's probably not patchable from the things we get back from you.
Apologies. Cliff Allen, public works director, city engineer. The, uh, I don't think it's any secret, this thing's been leaking for a decade, perhaps longer. Um, all due respect to my predecessors, we should've done a roof, new roof ten years ago. And I, you know, it's my understanding that that decision was delayed until we decided what would happen with the library. Um, and the, the new roof has, uh, most recently been delayed, wondering what we will do with the museum. And, and it's become a part of the multi-million dollar project. Uh, meanwhile, we have identified the actual leaks. There was a lot of guessing going on in previous years, but we got the right people up there this last fall and, and truly found the holes in, in a, in a long area deterioration that is very susceptible and continues to leak. It's a known, uh, defect and we know we can fix that area. If there are some other minor ones out there, you know, we can't guarantee we'll get it all, but I really recommend we, we patch what we can now. The CIP you have before you, um, is to get the ball rolling on a future roof. Regardless of the future of this building, it's still a viable structure, private, public, museum, uh, any other use. You, you simply have to preserve the, uh, the skeleton, uh, and the first thing you need is, is a viable roof on that. And I can make the same argument with the, uh, electrical use. It, it's a viable part of the, uh, the entire structure. Um, what we seek to do next year is simply get the design in place and in the process, we have no problem taking a look at the, the feasibility of, of a peak roof. Uh, I, I won't voice any opinion right now. I'm sure it will be higher. Uh, honestly, we have issues with those types of roofs as well. It really boils down to the quality of the work, the detailing, the proper, um, selection of materials. Uh, I, I'd much prefer we just let the designers work that through and, and see what comes of it. Uh, but again, we can certainly ask for that peak roof. Did I answer your question or raise ten more?
Well, I think you answered them, but what do we need to get ourselves to a point of occupancy next year, Steve?
I think we're, we're okay on occupancy. Uh, these electrical upgrades, uh, you know, certainly carry us forward, uh, take care of any known leaks. Again, it's an old, old roof. It's very brittle. Walking up there for the next repair might cause a leak, uh, you know, so I can't give you this absolute definitive, we will get everything. I, I sure hope to, I sure expect to, but there will be no guarantees. I see no issues with occupancy for the coming year if we get these electric repairs done. There are portions of the building that I don't think are, are ready to be taken over yet, but I really can't speak on behalf of the museum director.
Matt, that's a question.
Cliff? And maybe this is better for Carl or Bob. If, all right, we put this in the CIP, when do we expect that, that it would work, that the work would start on the roof, at what, this summer?
Well, the design, we can pull the trigger on, uh, at the first of the year. Uh, likely that'll be a, a, uh, architectural consultant or engineering consultant. The CIP and manager Ramon, correct me if I'm wrong, the actual work, um, portion of that CIP calls for twenty fifteen, does it not?
Construction is projected for twenty fifteen. That's clear.
No, it's, it's.
No, thanks for clarifying that. So if we, if we wanna move that forward, I guess that's a consideration, but it has an effect on the reserves. No, I, I'm okay, I guess I'm okay with that, getting the, getting a little more information and then having a vote. If the construction's the next year, then we can cease the spending if we.
Marty then Russell.
Um, does the city own City Park or just that part where we've got that hatchery there? Or is it the borough? I know the borough has parks and rec powers.
Owned by the borough.
It's owned by the borough, okay. But we have that section where the hatchery is.
Hatchery is.
We own that part. Um, no, I was just thinking, there probably, Mr. Dial would agree with me that there probably aren't that many areas that we would agree on, but I had the same concerns about the, uh, Fire Hall downtown. And I think that this really honestly might present an opportunity for us to put a fabulous piece of property in private hands and let that do something. I, I know that there, you know, there's a lot of sentimental, sentimentality attached to that place, but just because something's old doesn't mean that it's, uh, that we have to keep it forever. Um, it's, it's a gorgeous spot. It could be all kinds of different things. And if we've got property over there near the, the Heritage Center, there may be some innovative way to expand over there to include, to make a fabulous museum over there, uh, on an area of land we already own as well. Um, just, just a thought. I, I think we really need to, um, do a lot of thinking about the future of this building before we dump a lot of money into it.
Russell?
Uh, Cliff, again, I'm new here and I remember sitting in on the meetings beforehand, so I was just looking for a little bit of clarification on, is this the roof that we were talking about that had the cellulose, that had the special materials that they were gonna use to?
Uh, I don't recall cellulose coming up, but yeah, it's a specialty roof, a special membrane and, and we need the right products on it. It is the same roof we talked about a week ago.
Okay. And that was the one where we had to have somebody, there was the contractor, there was only a certain contractor that could?
Correct. Certified, qualified and, and experienced and, and reliable.
And it, right. I, I was just wondering, is, had we looked at any other materials or options as far as, does it have to, is, how does this?
You have to use a compatible material. You have to.
Oh, that's on the roof now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for the, for the patching. You have to use a compatible material, compatible adhesives, compatible fasteners. Uh, there were some repairs done in the past that were not, were not compatible materials and ultimately they caused more deterioration and in the long run did more harm than good.
Right. So it's a cellulose roof that's on presently?
Uh, cellulose? No, it, it's a, what we call a rubber membrane or EPDM.
Okay.
Uh, there might be some type of cellulose materials underneath them, but I, I can't speak to that.
Okay. I was just looking for clarification and was wondering if there were different materials that might be?
Generically, we call it a membrane roof.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
KJ?
'Cause I'm not the smartest one up here, I'll tell you that. So what is this, uh, so are we gonna do that sixty-five thousand dollars in repairs if we pass this? And then continue on?
I'm sorry, the sixty-five in repairs is what we encumbered last week.
Right.
Right, and that'll take place, it'll be encumbered now. It'll take place this month, maybe in two next year. That's the repair of the roof and the replacement of the lights.
Right.
The lights, of course, are a permanent thing. The patch on the roof, uh, will go away, of course, when we replace the roof. Uh, and then we'll follow up this coming year with the forty-two thousand, I believe, on the design allocation for the new roof and decide what to do with it and how to approach
Carl, did you have something?
Yeah, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. If the direction or discussion is going to focus on possible disposal of the Centennial Building and then trying to relocate the museum elsewhere, uh, discussion tonight has been down near the Totem Heritage Center. The hatchery, don't forget, Sarah is looking at that, so that property may not be available by December.
Thank you. All right. Let's call the roll.
And Zingy? Yes. Woodhouse?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five to one. Bring us down update number twenty. Modifications to the two thousand fourteen Street Division Capital Improvement Program. Go ahead, Bob.
Remove the city modify the two thousand fourteen Street Division Capital Improvement Program by detailing the city manager's report dated December tenth, two thousand thirteen in order to fund four hundred fifty thousand dollar pavement overlay surface repair project.
Moving seconded. Bob?
Yeah, I noticed that in the budget, we didn't have any, um, overlays or surface repairs in our, uh, capital projects and that concerned me. We've made some great progress, but, uh, the roads are still, there's some areas that we need a lot of work. And I saw some placeholders or, uh, other areas where we could potentially use those funds to, to do this rather than do what we're doing. So I, of course, asked Cliff and Cliff wants to come up and explain this or if anybody wants an explanation on it. I appreciate, uh, what he did here and, and, uh, how I moved some of the monies around in the existing budget so that we could do what we could. Cliff, could you kinda elaborate on any of this, I guess?
Yes, I can. Uh, manager Ramon may, uh, may chime in here as well. Um, rock and tree maintenance, for instance. We, we allocated fifteen thousand for that. We try to have an annual CIP. Uh, it's, it's a variable thing. We don't know where the rock slides and, and the tree slides will happen from year to year. We just simply need to have a placeholder to avoid coming back repeatedly for that. So it, it was an opportunity to, uh, to garner a little more funding. Ultimately, we elected to split, uh, Ketchikan Lakes Road, let it stand by itself. We would like to pursue the new equipment ideas and, uh, and flesh that one out. And, uh, with some of the others in here, uh, the Thomas Basin, that was plugged in last August, actually, or September, when we prepared budgets. Since that time, it took a slide, quite literally, and, uh, the damage we're seeing or the deterioration far exceeds what this two seventy-five thousand will do. Uh, so by itself, uh, we've already surpassed that with our emergency declaration. So that, those funds are essentially available for the overlay.
And the four hundred fifty thousand is about what we've been doing annually?
Yes, we've done anywhere from three hundred thousand upwards of six hundred thousand. Uh, I mean, we very much appreciate this. I mean, I, what we can do is, of course, directly proportionals the funds available. Uh, but this will be a great, you know, a great next step for the next year to keep us on the track of, uh, recovering our road waste.
Thank you. Matt?
Cliff, the original appropriation was four hundred thousand, right? For our street overlays or what?
It was four hundred thousand.
All right, call the roll.
Harris?
Aye.
Olson?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Woodhouse?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to nothing. That brings us to twenty-one. Matt, you wanna make that motion?
Sure. Remove the city council notify the two thousand fourteen Ford Divisions Capital Improvement, I'm sorry, notify, notify the two thousand fourteen Ford Divisions Capital Improvement Program by deleting the berth four transfer, bridge modifications and berth four tender float extension projects, saving up two hundred thirty thousand, two hundred ninety thousand and stuff.
Moving in seconded. Do you wanna say anything, Matt?
Um, I think I raised most of my concerns at the last one, but I, I still have heartburn over putting in the fifty thousand dollar, but, um, is Cliff here? I'm sorry, not Cliff, I'm sorry. It's Steve here. I just, I just want Steve to explain because I had issues with the guard shack and you guys, just with the original cost.
Oh, okay.
And you guys did the modifications. Um, and I think part of my issue with this is just the fact that, um, when the thing was first built, they, like you said, they put in stuff that would deteriorate in a little faster rate and were putting in the higher end. Can you explain why we wanted to put in the higher end lighting rather than going with something that's not as expensive?
Fort Harris Director Steve Corcoran. Um, most of this project is not lighting. It's to replace the, uh, the switchgear for the capstons on berth three and berth four. So we're not talking just berth four. Um, there's three capstons on the, um, on the mooring dolphins at berth three. Um, one of them already was replaced with what is, we would hope to be like a standard package that First City Electric did up for us, um, with a stainless steel box and some switchgear and breakers and that, that is something that they can get easily and keep in stock. Um, so we'd like to replace the other two to keep those from, from continually blowing. Uh, at berth four, there's one, two, three, four, I think there's five more, uh, three on the mooring dolphins and then two on the shoreside dolphins. We had one blow several times this year and another one blow, I think, once. And when I say blow, it's like they, they, they go to turn the capstan on and things just kind of explode on them and it's, it's no good until they can get the, uh, the switchgear inside replaced. Um, in, looking through the berth four lease, uh, it is on the city to do all maintenance for the, the berth four facility, for utilities, buildings, anything. It is on the city to do the maintenance there.
So that's something we need to do. Um, the only lighting portion of it, the two shore side, um, mooring bollards, never had any lights on them. If they're gonna be doing electrical work right there, it was a good time to maybe just stick a couple of lights, one on each one, uh, to do two things. One, to give a little bit of lighting to the walkway back there, and, uh, the more important one is to give the line handlers some lighting, especially, uh, in September. Um, early in the mornings or later in, in the afternoons when it's dark and the, the, uh, the bridge personnel literally can't see what the line handlers are doing down in the bollard. Um, in the past, we have rented actually one of the big portable light standards from Tyler um, for a couple of weeks late in that season, uh, to give them some light when they're doing their line handling. Uh, we didn't do it this season, um, but it'd be, be a good time to do it. And that's not a very big part of the project. The, the big part is, it's about five or six grand per station to replace out the, the, the switchgear and the, and the boxes.
Keep going.
I, no, Steve, I, I, Steve, I asked the question wrong and, and stated likes and I didn't mean to. I apologize. What I just basically wanted you to do was come and say what you said, and the fact that we're standardizing everything, making it so it'll last longer and hold up and be less, less for us in the long run, is kind of what I was looking for.
And, and the, actually, the most important thing, it'll actually make it much safer-
Yeah.
-for the personnel up there as, as well. Uh, not just my guys, but more of the line handlers, uh, and, and we wanna be safe. And the whole berth one and two project, number one priority has been safety. I wanna make the port safer.
And, and again, I just wanted, because we sometimes spend money and people can see this, and it's, it is a lot of money, fifty thousand, and you did a great job explaining it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Call the roll.
Harris?
Hi.
Zingy? Seaberton?
Yeah.
West?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Woodhouse?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to nothing. Good job on that, Matt. Um, that brings us to, um, twenty-two, which is an update. Twenty-three, I think, I don't want us to deal with until we get into the budget. And, um, same with number one on the KPU, let's get into that. So, and I think that's number two. Okay. And that's also for getting into KPU budget. Okay. So, seeing nothing else, let's get into the KPU budget.
Your Honor, your honor.
Yep?
Uh, just one quick thing before we get into the KPU budget. It's something that I had, uh, intended to bring up before, um, and that's the fencing and along with the Third Avenue bypass that we've discussed in the past. And I remember we looked at several different options on the length of the fencing and uh, I, I don't think it's something we can discuss tonight since we don't have that information, but maybe you could bring that memo back up, Carl, that had the different numbers on it. Um, I really have a lot of concerns about the lack of any kind of safety fencing along there. Not only are people getting their roofs uh, damaged by people throwing stuff off there, but we did have somebody walk off it and die, and I really think we need to do something else up, up there.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to KPU. A one is the budget resolution. We'll need a motion.
I'll make it forward.
Pick it down. Get down A one. The top part.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Resolution adopt, I move, uh, a resolution adopting the budget for the year two thousand fourteen, appropriating from the Ketchikan Public Two of these enterprise funds for the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen and establish an effective date.
Move it in second. All right. Carl, do you wanna start it off with your summation of the transmitter?
Again, Mr. Mayor, again, very similar to the general government budget, we approached next year's spending plan, uh, in an attempt to comply with the direction that we were given by the council, uh, that is no increase in utility rates and keep the spending levels uh, no greater than they are for two thousand and thirteen. We could not do that and, uh, maintain a sustainable budget. The budget that was submitted by the department actually depleted reserves in their entirety and had a negative balance. So we had to go in and make some changes, both to the operating budget and capital budget. Essentially, we had to eliminate several positions, uh, and defer a number of capital projects. That's the spending plan that, uh, we presented and that you have before you this evening. Uh, while we didn't, uh, do an alternative budget like we did for general government, uh, based on conversations that I've had with individual council members, uh, we did put together a brief report, which is budget update number one. Essentially saying that if you don't want to eliminate positions in order to derive sufficient revenues, a three percent increase in electric rates and a fifteen percent increase in water rates would be required. Just to briefly respond, uh, to some of the comments that were made this evening about, uh, utility rates. Uh, right now, the water division operates at a loss to the tune of about seven, seven hundred thousand dollars a year. That, that's fact. That's reality. It loses money. Uh, electric rates, uh, in the electric division, we do well if we have a break even year. Uh, as, as was indicated, the last increase, uh, was in two thousand eight. That increase was one point six five percent. Since two thousand eight, the Consumer Price Index has risen nine point nine percent. And I will tell you, you will not find a private utility that does not maintain its rates to keep pace with inflation. Along that same line, we've raised rates five times since nineteen eighty-nine. Those rate increases totaled about twenty-six point seven percent. Since nineteen eighty-nine, the Consumer Price Index has risen by eighty-eight point three percent. So I, I think it speaks for itself. Uh, we're not running it on a sustainable basis. Telephone is no longer the cash cow that it used to be, which is how we got by with what we did. Changes to the regulatory, uh, regulations that have already taken place and are continuing to take place have diminished our separations revenue greatly. And you can't really continue to rely on telephone to bail out the, the other two utilities. Bob, do you wanna add anything? That's, that's the overview.
Thank you, Carl. Um, I saw your option, I mean, your option number one, and I thought we should have raised the water rates last year fifteen percent so it wouldn't be like we are now, so I was definitely in favor of that. Bob, what is the rate of the fifteen percent? How much dollars, uh, a month? No, on each bill, what would that cost?
Oh, sure. Yeah, hold on a sec here. Right now, the current rate is, uh, forty-two dollars and ninety-one cents per month for residential customers. If we raise it fifty-one percent-
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Been a long day.
Yeah.
Fifteen percent, it would be forty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents per month.
Thank you. Um, on the electric rate increase, um, I'll look at it next year, but I will work hard to make sure we don't do any electric rate increase. Um, I'm just not as, um, concerned about our cash flow as I look through, um, C one, you know, we've, um, last year, we had a fund balance start in January at ten million, and this year we're starting, um, at ten million again. Estimate for this ye, I mean, for this coming year is twelve million. Um, so I'm just not ready to, um, jump rates. I know we're not, we're more of a public entity and I know we're not, um, if we were a private, it would be a, a lot different, but, um, we are public and I think, um, we can, um, go another year without having to, um, I'd just like to see how those numbers back up. I know we're spending more, we're getting into the LG, um, uh, four G and, um, stuff, but, um, I'd sure like to see how that pans out this year. Um, anybody have any questions on the transmitter letter?
Good question, Matt. Wait.
You bet.
Um, what is the shipyard ping presently and when is that adjustment come around again?
The adjustments are made on an annual basis in October. I can't tell you the current rate off the top of my head, but we're locked into that power sales agreement for another at least twenty years.
Yeah, no, I just was wondering what-
Andy, do you-
You know, if-
I, I-
We're falling behind-
We can come back and-
On, you know, cost versus.
I'll get you what the rate is.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor? Yes.
Yeah, we, we did discuss water rates last year, but we didn't move anywhere with them. And one of my biggest concerns is, is before we do an across-the-board raise, we need to address the issue of industrial and fish processors and paying more of their fair share of the rate before we pass that onto our residential, um, rates. There is a, a cost of service here. I know that the can rees, um, had a bumper here, but that also, uh, you know, uh, use more water. I think in August, it was thirty million gallons, and if you think that we're charging, uh, it costs us what, two hundred and sixty cents? Thousand gallons to treat it, something like that? There's seventy-five thousand dollars worth of use and they're not paying anywhere near to that. Um, and, and by no means, uh, an intent to push their burden over on, onto the, or, uh, fish processors, but, uh, as well as they know how much it costs to put a pound of fish in a can, we know how much it costs to give them a thousand gallons of water and we just need to even up on that a little bit. So before we move with across the board, we need to think about whether we're gonna look at an ordinance for metering. I think metering is probably the fairest way to do that because if we're putting an inch and a half hose on the ground and it's flowing freely, um, we're paying two dollars and sixty cents a thousand for that water to run across the four and do nothing. Um, and so there's no incentive to conserve water if you're doing it on a flat rate and it's way low. I mean, they're probably paying forty percent of their actual costs for us to water. And I think that's probably a conservative figure. Um, and in regards to revenues, uh, the city of Ketchikan, we, we, a few years back, uh, adopted a financial objective, a fund balance, where we're doing twenty-five percent of the operating expense. And we, we raised that based on some, um, input from our finance department and manager in regard to what we can do there. Uh, quite frankly, if we get into a point where we have to really jump into that thing, we're probably into a world of hurt already. But if we were just to drop that five percent, uh, to a twenty percent, it would probably free up about a million point six. Not a rate increase, it's utilizing, uh, fun. Bob, can you could speak to that a little bit if you would, please?
With the budget that we have presented to the council for consideration does not set the reserve that, uh, the eight million dollars is what twenty-five percent equates to. Uh, we have a, a minimum that we don't like to fall below, and that's five million. So the reserve that you're looking in the budget right now, as it stands, is about five point seven million. So we are already below the twenty-five percent requirement yet.
I was just thinking that if we were trying to hold that balance at the full twenty-five percent, it's just another way to free up revenues that we're, we're holding, to help us balance this out as we go through this situation and may alleviate some of the issues of bringing too many rates on too fast. I think that is a concern. I understand that, uh, the cost of services, the cost of regulations, unfunded mandates in the wastewater system and water system are costing us a tremendous amount of money. The treatment plants we're putting in that we can't run, all type of things. So that concerns me, so, um, trying to figure out how to lessen the impact here and give us some breathing room when we incorporate some of these rates. I, uh, was at AML and, um, a number of the communities are suffering the same situation we are. And we, we've had a discussion about whether it's, uh, um, a revenue issue or a, a, a cost issue. Peter Frig right now is raising their water rates three percent a year, just trying to catch up on what they're doing. Even if we raise the fish processors, uh, up, uh, some, it's still the cheapest water they're gonna get in southeast. I think, you know, they, they incorporated their waste study probably eight years ago or something like that, and they're still working at getting their rates up to where it actually covers their cost. And there is a cost of service here, this, uh, this, whether it's the treating of the water or the capital projects or bonding or, or whatever it is, and, and we have to be conscious of that. Um, what has happened is we delayed the inevitable, so now we're having to take a bigger hit because of that to try to catch up. Um, I'm a little concerned that we tried to catch up our reserves too quick, that we can do it in a more, uh, an easier fashion and, and lessen the impact. I was in favor of that. And I'm not exactly sure how we're gonna work through the budget and get there, but that would be my intent.
You bet. Thanks, Bob. Anybody else? Russell?
I just had a quick question for Bob. Um, I kn, on that, how many, on the eight million or the twenty-five percent that you guys like to keep it, how many years have, have you been able to do that? I mean, have we been doing that in the past or has it been around the five?
Well, actually, the original, the original policy was, was twelve and a half percent. And that level was about, uh, about three and a half to four million. Last year, we increased it to twenty-five percent. That raised it to roughly eight, nine million dollars in that range. Uh, in the last several years, um, like four or five years, we've actually been able to maintain actual reserve when we get to the end of the year at an amount above, um, the minimum requirement, as Mayor Williams pointed out. Reason for that is that we, we put together our budget based on estimates and based on our spending plan for the, for the current, for the upcoming budget year. We don't always spend all of our appropriations and therefore the reserve come in higher.
Okay, thank you.
And we've been pretty consistent in doing that, which I hope we continue, and that's why I'm, um, speaking against the electric rate increase, increase and looking at it again next year instead of, um, putting it on this year. I'd like to see how that, I mean, we've been, our fund balances have been at ten or above where I can't even remember the last time it has been below. And this is the first year where, um, we're starting to get concerned about it, but, um, you know, our fund balance is up two million from last year. It started at ten. And so before I throw in the rates, I'd like to see, um, how we come out for this year. As people are saying it's getting tighter, I'd like to see how it comes out, then address it next year. Matt?
Um, I have a, a concern with the water rates as well, that, um, unlike Bob, it's, the, the fisheries aren't my concern so much. Um, and, and this is all raised when there's a fascinating, uh, news article on the, on K R B D regarding, I can't remember which community in southeast, and their water usage and cruise ships using their water. And are we, like, my question is, and, and it comes around to the same thing with the, with can rees, is that are we charging, are we competitive in the, in the sales that we do in terms of rate for cruise ship? Or are we the cheapest place in southeast to get water? I don't know if anyone's here to answer that, or if we can just have that.
We can get, we can get a comparison.
I, I know it'll take some time, but that, I think that's something we should look at as well. Um, and, and the article was, or the, the news report was really interesting because they talked about, you know, the cruise industry talked about how there are so, there are a couple of ports that are really available to give water and they were choosing not to get water at this one place to help the community out with, with their costs and, and with water preservation. So, um, I was just curious if we were the one that was the cheapest and we were getting a lot of water going that way.
I can't remember when we adjusted it last, but I know we adjusted it not too long ago. Yeah, that could be a while. All right. Um, transmitter letter, anybody have anything? Um, also on Bob's thing, on the, um, looking at the processes that people look, um, use more, and I know we went through the study and everything, but we never came to any conclusion on how to address that. And Bob's talking about metering, which we have the meters in there. Um, have we given any direction about looking at a meter rate, Carl?
I know that Mr. Newell, Mr. Kleiner have been trying to develop that rate structure. There's just a lot on their plates and they haven't gotten to it. I don't know, Bob, if you can, might add anything to that?
Yeah, I would concur, Carl. We, we really do wanna move forward with it, but there is, uh, there is hugging an awful lot on our plate, particularly with the new world implementation. We have a, a lot of things coming up, uh, in two thousand and fourteen with the bond issue for the hospital.
Well, before, if we don't get into it, is there a way we can look at the, um, you know, come up with a, um, percentage, looking at what they use? And I'm not talking about jacking their rate, but, um, making the bigger users' rate increase a little higher than the residential?
What I'd like to do is meet with John and, uh, Bob tomorrow and look at some type of interim measure that we can get in place until they can finalize their, their formal, their formal rate structure.
And you'll bring that back to us? Thanks. Excellent. Anything else on the transmitter letter? You're lucky, Carl. I wrote a whole bunch of notes and I left them on my desk. I apologize. So I'll try to remember as I go back here. Um, Bob, I guess I asked you on this one. On the, uh, yeah, we're getting a rebate from SEPA this year. For two thousand and fourteen, is anything programmed and what's the status of that? And that's for-
Uh, yes, we did program a rebate for, for this year, but we were advised by SEPA not to anticipate a rebate for next year. So there has not been a rebate program for two thousand and fourteen. Uh, however, they did indicate that a rebate for next year might be possible if they do not pursue the, um, the raising of the- Uh, however, they did indicate that a rebate for next year might be possible if they do not pursue the, um, the raising of the, of the dam at Swan Lake. Uh, for now, they told us not to expect it, not to program it, but they plan on moving forward next year.
That's your directions. Bob?
I think that management and financing has been looking at that and what it would cost if we had to go off the bond. So, I think we're waiting for the government to let you come out and see if we can finalize and what they can move forward.
Thank you very much. And then Carl, I also noticed under, um, and I guess, so, I mean, I looked at this as a whole. I don't know if you guys have questions on, you wanna do each, a bit, individual section? Or you wanna look, have questions for, um, all the different departments? Um, I'm already over in C I P, so. Um, but, um, if there's nothing else on transmittal, um, there's the summary. And, um, on C one. And then, um, we have revenues on E one.
Yes? Would this be the time that we would, uh, consider a increase in the water rate?
Um, well, let's, um, let's see what Carl comes back with.
Okay.
Before we do that. Will you have that ready by our, um, council meeting on Thursday?
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. I'm, I'm hoping to be done, so we don't have to come back tomorrow, but that's up to you.
Well, I think if we're gonna try and do an alternative rate and try to do some revenue projections, if you're not gonna meet tomorrow, we'll bring it back in the meeting of the nineteenth and then we'll try to get you a report out early.
I'm hoping we can have the, um, nineteenth, you don't have it really booked there with a lot of agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there will be, uh, considerable agenda items for the meeting of the nineteenth.
Nice and quick ones, so we can deal with the.
That solely is dependent upon the council.
Thank you. All right, try.
Your honor?
You bet, Bob.
I'm still down on C five, item A, and that's back to the compliance with fund balance policy. And given that we're going through a, a struggle here trying to figure out where we're gonna go and you're not thinking about any particular raises in our electrical rates, I have some concerns when we get into telecommunication about, uh, apprentices and stuff like that. I imagine the telephone, uh, manager can talk to the fact that we have an A D workforce over there and we're gonna start having linemen drop out over the next three or four, five years. And if we cut back on our apprenticeship program, um, we're gonna have a hard time selling those. It's nice to have an apprentice, especially if it's a local kid that's growing up here that's working to get into the trade and then we're able to maintain him and keep him. It's a nice deal. So, as we go through this, one of the things, one of my main issues would be to, to maintain at least that apprenticeship program and look at some of the other, uh, options. Uh, retain employees, uh, because if we're not gonna, if we're not gonna retain employees, we'll be paying overtime. Probably not being as efficient as we could if we had guys on the ground all day long to help multiple crews. So, those are, those are concerns. When you start cutting labor in that field, uh, whether it be engineers or, or linemen or techs or whatever we're doing there, I think we're gonna pay for it later on that line.
Mr. Mayor, could I respond to that?
Yes.
Um, Councilmember Severson, again, just like in general government, these cuts are not cuts that management endorsed. We did it to comply with the direction that we were given. Um, if council is gonna adopt the, the philosophy that, uh, at least on the electric rate side, that no rate increase is gonna be done because of past history on where reserves are coming in because we're not spending. My recommendation, although qualified, would be to restore the positions, give us that direction tonight. But understand that we are getting better at our programming of work. That was quite evident by where we are with the, the four G and the circuit to Prince Rupert. We're gonna be spending considerable amount of capital next year. And you may very well find yourself, if not four months from now, twenty-four months from now, that you will have drawn down those reserves. And you're probably not gonna be where you wanna be because at that point you may be forced to increase rates more than what's being proposed now. And that's, that's my quali- qualified recommendation.
Um, Carl, that twenty-five percent we put into place last year, which for reserves, I remember, was it last year we did it? Was it March? Yeah. Which I was against back then 'cause I thought it was way too much, and still do. Um, so, I mean, I, um, I guess I'm more comfortable with, uh, um, revenues and, um, what we have in reserves. I mean, we're spending, um, eight hundred thirty-three, you say, in operating, but we're taking four point four in reserves. And, you know, we can go through some of these capital things and knock out a million bucks just to cover the.
Mr. Mayor, that, that's the other thing you gotta understand, that the majority of your capital is not operating revenue.
I understand.
They're coming from bonds or grants. And that's gonna become less and less available to you as time goes on.
I understand.
So, if you're gonna deal with your aging infrastructure, you're gonna be putting that much more pressure on your reserves. Yeah, they're, they're good now. I just want the council to understand.
I understand. The, um, ah, what's the other question? Um, how much of this now are we repaying? You know, we, we have to repay to, is that we borrowed money for, for that four G from the city and you said, I think, the port?
Only repaying interest in the proposed budget.
How much do we overall owe those?
We originally were gonna loan, uh, K P U, uh, five million dollars, but we reduced that down to four. Uh, the first payment was supposed to start.
How is that broken down between city and port?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, the port is going to be putting up two point five million, uh, Community Facility Development Fund. It's putting in seven hundred thousand and the self-insurance fund is two hundred thousand.
So, which one is the seven hundred thousand, which fund?
The Community Facility Development Fund. That's fund, uh, three thirty.
Three, three, zero. And that is the one that has two million something in it.
Right.
And then, didn't we take a loan, what was the other loan we made to who for, out of our funds? Oh, the harbor.
For the drive-down ramp, that was, uh, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
And which fund did we take that out of?
Uh, Fund One Eighteen Economic Development and Parking Fund.
Okay, and that was one point two million?
No, one, yeah, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand.
And so, we're looking at seven, so we've got like two million of cash going back to the city account, um, reserves. Over how many years was that?
Uh, the, the advance to the harbor, I believe we're gonna pay that off in four years. And the advanced K P U is, uh, one year interest-free and, uh, then five years thereafter. So, we're looking at six years to recover the K P U, uh, loan.
Okay. So, that's where a lot of our revenues, I mean, our reserves went there on the city side. Um, anybody else have any questions? Um, Bob, did you have a motion on, did you wanna make a motion on the employees?
About restoring?
Yeah, I thought somebody said they wanted to restore.
I do, yes. Um, but, you know, again, uh, we wanna make sure that Carl can balance out that with the other funds. If you're not talking about any kind of a rate increase. I'd move that we're gonna, uh, where necessary, we're gonna, um, restore the, uh, the employees, especially when we're talking about skills and services that we're doing, telephone division and, and K P U.
And what was the to- I saw it in here and I know it's here just giving us, what's the total for those employees? Seven hundred?
Seven hundred eighty-seven thousand.
Seven hundred eighty-six thousand and thirty-five.
Okay, and then, um, I ma- I made a motion, yeah. Oh.
You can, I think, utilize reserve to do that unless we find funding elsewhere when we.
The, um, yeah.
Can you repeat the whole motion, Bob? I'm sorry.
I move to restore the employees, uh, at this particular point that we're cutting the budget with concerns of, you know, our aging workforce and ma- maintain a, maintain a new blood coming out. And to utilize, um, you know, I, I had suggested that we utilize the, uh, fund balance and take it out of the reserve. So, such times we can find that maybe in capital or something else. How you wanna work the funding on that.
Okay. It'll come out of the, um, reserves there and then if we make a increase in the water rates, that can help offset and then whatever else we do. Or we can keep, we don't have to restore if there's no margin. Oh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Hope we got a second. Anybody wanna speak to it? Marty?
Yeah, I'm just kinda concerned that we're putting the cart before the horse without considering, you know, how we're gonna get revenues. I, I'm going, dipping that deeply into the reserves is concerning to me. But I seconded it, so you could talk more about it if you wanted to.
Bob, do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, well, uh, you look at some of the people that we're cutting and I think there's one position that are not filled right now. What, what position is that?
C O N T, Central Office Network Technician.
Ed, could you talk a little bit about that position so, uh, have a full understanding of where we're at and what we have to cover it right now?
Ed Cushing, Telecommunications Division Manager, um, essentially, there are two positions in the telecom budget for two thousand fourteen that, uh, we propose to eliminate. One is an apprentice position, which you mentioned. The other is a central office network technician position, which is presently vacant. The apprentice position is a staffed, filled position. Telecom has a number of C O N T positions. These are technicians who install, operate, maintain and repair the, uh, internet television voice and soon the wireless infrastructure as well as the new microwave that we're building down to Prince Rupert. So, rather than having cut back on infrastructure, we're actually expanding our infrastructure. Um, so, it's from an operations perspective, counterintuitive to be cutting staff now. As you alluded earlier, uh, and I think you're aware, we have, uh, a strong track record at telecom of having vacant C O N T positions throughout the year and we've mitigated that historically by working overtime. Something we've been able to do because we have a budget that is, that is sufficient, um, given the way we budget for overtime. We typically budget for not very much overtime and we budget to be fully staffed. If we're not fully staffed, then we have some budget surplus to compensate for the, exceeding the overtime budget. We simply transfer money between straight time and overtime. If we cut a C O N T position, of course, that means we have less money in the overall budget with which to accommodate the overtime that will undoubtedly work to compensate for the fact that we're not fully staffed. It's just that simple. We don't have the flexibility in the C B A to work shifts, yet we have a great deal of work we have to do in the evening or post-midnight, relative to network rearrangements because it involves shutting down the network, which you really can't do effectively in the middle of the day or early in the evening. So, it's, everything's connected. As Carl intimated, it isn't something we're proposing to do as a matter of, uh, to take advantage of efficiencies we've gained. Rather, it's something we have to do to meet the number, so to speak. I don't know if that's helpful or unhelpful.
It is, it is. And, um, you know, I, as we asked Carl in the general government budget, if he has suggestions and, and I'd like him to bring those forward in regards to balancing and bringing those people back on board. And then we can, I guess, work through those. Thank you.
Thank you. On the utility side, your only op- is, your option is reserves. If you're not gonna increase rates, if you feel that based on past performance, you know, we've been not completing the capital side as we budget, so we end up with excess cons. If, if that's a trend that you think is gonna continue for two thousand fourteen, then you're, you're probably fine restoring those positions. If, as I predict, we're, we're gonna be doing better, um, just because of what we've done this year, based on what Ed and his people have done, and I know what the electric division has planned for next year. You know, we've got a very aggressive work plan. If you're gonna take it out of reserves, then, then my recommendation to this council is you really need to finish what you've started the last couple of years with the cost of service analysis. And your own consultants have told you that your rates have to go up. John, John Heatherling stood in this council chamber and told you that. We, we can bring those back after the first of the year and, and you can start looking at them again. But, uh, if you're gonna restore the positions and, and draw down the reserves by that amount, I, I think it's incumbent that you complete the cost of service review that, that was started.
Yeah, Carl, I'm, I'm in agreement that we need to be able to cover our cost of service. And, you know, we haven't, in the water division and, and electrical, we haven't put on a lot of people. We have a lot of capital needs and, uh, the cost of materials and labor has gone up and we haven't done anything to address that. And, uh, I know that in the past, we've used the, uh, the rebates from CIPA to help with some of that. And with the projects coming on and the costs in there, in there, we're going up too. I don't know if you can bank on those from year to year. So, um, yeah, I think we need to do the cost of service.
If you guys are uncomfortable with the, uh, on what those reserve numbers are gonna be, then I recommend you don't put the people back in and just, um. All right, anybody else?
Your honor?
Go ahead.
Um, a couple, a couple of questions. One that, Bob, this is for you. With CIPA, um, we're looking at, we're asking twelve and Carl's gonna step. We're asking for twelve million to raise the dam from the state, correct? That's the entire financing of the project?
Correct.
Hundred percent. So, if we get that, then CIPA's expense on that is going to be negligible.
Correct, correct.
And so, they're withholding, I mean, if, if we don't get it and it's twelve million and we bond for it over, what's the usual bond for, I mean, twenty years?
Uh, we do have one, but I think they have to build out for thirty years.
So, if they do a thirty-year bond, I, how much do they give back to the communities every year on an annual basis?
It varies based on, uh, what, what they've used in their maintenance and capital project. And I think last year was what, eight, eight hundred thousand or something like that? Yeah.
Eight hundred total?
That, that's what they gave last year, eight hundred thousand.
Total, not just the catch.
Total, or is it, was that our share, Bob?
Nope, Andy, Andy, it looks like Andy might know.
Yeah.
Yeah, this past year was, uh, four hundred, four hundred and thirty thousand.
It was our share, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, we got four hundred and forty thousand in two thousand twelve. And we're estimating, uh, four hundred thousand this year.
And then a bond payment on twelve million would probably be close to eight, close to seven or eight hundred thousand a year or, for, for thirty years?
Uh, thirty years, no, that would be twenty-one.
So, I mean, so it would eat that eight hundred thousand up, okay. That was just one, I just needed a clarification. I, we've been incredibly aggressive with K P U, especially telecom. I think if you're a business and you're trying to expand your business, you wouldn't in the middle of that take your workforce and say, yeah, we're scrapping people that we need. We're doing this, at least I know, I, I voted for the aggressive nature of telecom just for the fact that we keep it competitive and I still hold out the hope that we're able to, um, pass it along to some private entity. And there's only one way we're gonna do that and that is to continue to grow. I'm not comfortable going too far into reserves. That, that makes me very nervous. Um, I have another question for Carl and that comes around to, we've made the offer to dispose of Whitman to CIPA. And if they agree, if, if they agree to take it on and we begin to get the repayment to pay the bonds, what's the plan with that extra one million dollars that we would have?
Well, for the first, for the first ten years, we'll be repaying. Well, for the first, for the first 10 years, we'll be repaying the debt.
Right.
Be making the principal and interest payments that will come from revenue that, that SEPA would be paying us.
But we, but we wouldn't have that one, I mean, that would be a zero.
Right.
So we'd, we'd have, it'd be a pass through, we'd have an additional $1 million.
For, for the first five years, it's going to be retiring the debt the telephone owns general government.
Which bond are we paying off this year? The payoff fee, I think. We reduce that 600,000 that we're paying for this year.
Actually, uh, next year, we're going to be paying off Series, um, Series B. That's only a $625,000 annual debt service. And then in about, uh, three, three more years, we'll be paying off, uh, Series T, which is about 1.2 million, I believe.
So we do have some savings coming out. We'll pay for Whitman if we do. Cause that's almost 2 million right there in debt service in the next couple of years.
If you look at the, uh, table on page C7. C7, that gives you a schedule of all of our current and future debt service by issue.
I guess my question comes about to is if it happens, we're essentially going to have a million dollars less of expenditures at that time.
Is that correct?
If SEPA agrees to take on Whitman. I mean, I'm just talking about Whitman only.
Is that correct, Carl or Bob?
That, that's correct. The way the, um, the, um, the proposal was structured for SEPA is that we would pay the debt service for a 10-year period and they would turn around and basically reimburse us for that debt service. But, so for the first 10 years, zero effect. And then at the end of 10 years, they would, um, pay off the bond and, um, reimburse us for all of our out-of-pocket costs, which I believe is somewhere between, it's been a while since I posted that, between about 2.5 to 3.5 million. But that would be a reimbursement of cost we've already paid that wasn't grant funded and that came out of our, our pocket. And then we would also reimburse the borough for their 2.5 million dollar grant.
And now, now I understand what you're saying, Carl, is that we use that to pay back the loan, but the loan payment, payment's already programmed.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So
Go ahead.
At, at the time of the sale, or if, if, if an agreement is reached and we get to that point, Ari, what is management's plan going to be for presenting us with that money? Would it be just to put it back in reserves at this time? Would it be to do something else?
That's going to depend on a number of things. We're now starting to incur debt service on the UV plant. Plus all the 1% loans on the water infrastructure projects that we've been doing on Alaska, Tongas, Alaska, Ryan. Big unknown and I, I know you're not going to want to hear this, but it's a big concern I've got. And we should be getting something relatively soon from CH to Hill. If we can't figure out what's going on in the watershed and, and get these raw coliform counts under, under control, this conversation is all been for now anyway because you're probably looking at a 30 or 40 million dollar water treatment plant. So it's, it's, it's not static, it's constantly evolving.
Correct. Do we have a motion on the table?
We do.
Yes.
All right.
Restoring the cuts.
Okay.
Restoring employees.
Okay. Call the roll.
Seabirdson.
Yes.
Woodhouse.
Yes.
Zingy. Harris. Olson.
Yes.
West. Yes.
I think that passes six to nothing. Say again. You bet. Three-minute break. It's a bit short. Smoke. All right. All right, we've given direction to the management on the water because we want to do the water rates, we disturb those employees. Um, there hasn't been a big outcry for the increase of the electric rates, 3%, so we're going to go from there. Um, does anybody have anything else, uh, questions on, um, the KPU budget before we get into budget update 23 so we can give them some direction on the sales tax and the wastewater? And, um, I also want to talk about the sales cap, sales tax cap. Nobody has anything else on the, that? Let's go to, um, update number 23. Uh, we have a re- recommended motion, number one, so we can, can we put that on the table, please?
Your Honor, I move the City Council to direct staff to repair an ordinance adjusting the 2014 general fund sales tax effective April 1st, 2014, as determined appropriate by the City Council. Said ordinance to be considered at the City Council meeting December 19th, 2013.
Second.
Moving second. Um, Carl, your recommendation was the five, um, half cent?
That's what we originally proposed, Mr. Mayor, dedicated to the operations of the library. My understanding is council members may have a different thought on what they want to do. We summarized the options, or Mr. Newell summarized the options that we, we heard. So we're looking for some direction as to what the council wants to do so we can finalize the, the general government budget based on that direction.
The options was the library sales tax. Um, there's a seasonal sales tax option. Um, there's a increase in sales tax of 4%. Um, the, um, option I had was to, um, if you can do it, it's to, um, instead of making a sales, um, a library sales tax, just make it a half, um, cent sales tax increase and either just direct it to the, um, bonds for the library and the fire department instead of dedicating it to any operations of the library. Matt, you had some ideas?
I, I'm, I'm right there with you. I, I would rather tie, tie the sales tax increase to, to repaying bonds than tie it to existing, um, agreements that we have in, you know, we, we do have these existing agreements with the borough and at this point, um, where we might anticipate a change, there's, they've made arrangements and all that to pay for it. I think it's more appropriate that we do it that way. We continually hear a lot of, or not a lot, we, we, but we continually hear some comment regarding how this will hurt people in terms of any tax increases will hurt people in terms of, um, paying for their essential services such as food. I can't find it in here, Bob, but do you, you have a page in here that's the breakdown of sales tax revenue? And I can't find it. If you can help me there.
Uh, breakdown by bond?
No, um, breakdown by revenue source. What industry, you know, we get so much from oil sales, we get so much from grocery sales.
There is a section in the transmit letter based on gross sales, but I, I'm not sure that's going to, is that what you're looking for?
I think that's
Probably about halfway into the transmit letter.
I think that's what I'm, yeah, okay, thank you. I was just looking everywhere, everywhere but here.
Find it?
I did, thank you. Um... Now, would, would grocery be put in the retail trade? In this?
Uh, probably they would be.
Okay. It's, it's no, it's no surprise that I, I favor us increasing the single item limit to $2,000. Because I don't think that one touches low income people as much as others do. That annually will gain us $200,000 there in revenue. But I also favor a seasonal, if we do any increases in sales tax, I, I favor a seasonal sales tax increase because it's going to capture sales, not only, it, it'll capture local, and it will, but it's also going to capture a heavy amount of people that are just passing through, whether it's fishermen passing through the fishing grounds in Washington, whether it's the cruise ship passengers coming through. We capture more funds that way. And I think a combination of the two is the way to go. But while we're sitting here, I, I don't know, Bob, if it's possible, but can we get something that says how many, what's, what the gross sales and what the revenue is from groceries? Is it possible for the borough to do that? No, that's, that's fine. Because at, at this point, I favor the 1% increase.
Seasonally?
Seasonally and, and as well as increasing the single item limit to 2,000. And that should get us roughly just this next year around 2.1 million. And if we can afford it, and I think we can easily afford at that point, we might want to look at reducing food costs from the sales tax.
Anybody else?
Your Honor?
Yes.
In regards to the cap, there's been
Oh, let's stick to, let's talk to just the sales tax. I have the cap down here as a separate item.
Okay, we can do that.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else on sale, the sales tax?
I have a question.
Yes.
And if you clarify it for me, I'd appreciate it.
You bet.
I believe when we put that bond out for the library, that the public was told there would be no sale, no sales tax increases through the library.
No.
They didn't say.
We've only said that with the hospital. Which we have the hospital sales tax paid for that bond.
What I hear from the public. But I, I believe it.
Thank you.
A lot of the discussion centered around how much money we were going to get from outside sources and we were, um, hoping for a significant amount more from other agencies. And we got, and that, what that did though was we got the 6 million from the state. And we got, and that, what that did though was, we got the six million from the state, and we got some funds from Rasmussen. If we had gotten more, it would have reduced the bond, and that's what a lot of the discussion centered around.
Okay, anybody else have any more direction on the sales tax? So far, Matt wants to do a seasonal, one percent. Anybody else? Instead of the half cent for a year, and I need more direction.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Bob.
On the back, back page here, we're looking at Option B3, is that what you're thinking, Matt?
Uh, yes. I'm sorry, yeah, Option B3.
And that's one of the ones that was favored by some new members, I think.
Anybody else? Yes?
I'll just, I'll just, I mean, just along the same lines as Bob, I, I haven't heard, and this goes, people like me who don't own a business to people who own a business. On both issues, it's been overwhelming agreement. As far as I've made contact with people outside, I haven't had people say do not do that. It's been almost a ten to one ratio of people that are in favor of these, of these types of increases.
All right, then we need directions, so we can write us up coordinates.
Can we talk about excluding?
So, so, so far, which one are you talking about?
B3.
B3. Anybody else? Marty?
Yeah, I just wish that we could drop it back a little bit more for the October to March than, than just down to the present level. And I realize we don't have this option here, but if we even dropped it down to three percent. Just to, you know, make it a little bit more palatable to people, to the people that live here going around.
Russell, you want anything?
I, I just, did Matt, was he talking about excluding groceries from?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Looking, okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I favor B3, just because we can look at some other aspects. B2 in a combination with the single item sales tax would probably meet our needs. But I, I favor B3.
So if we were looking at B3, we would be looking at aggressively pursuing the possibility of eliminating sales tax on groceries, is that correct?
I haven't said, I'm just, I'm, I, it-
Every time we've looked at that, we've come away and go, uh, ink and a war.
Okay.
Well, it, I don't know, but it comes up a lot. We also have the discussion because we have, in the time that I've been on council, been approached several times to reduce our tax base. And to continually limit our tax base. And it gets, the, the more you limit your tax base, the more your taxes have to be on, on those that are left to tax, so. If, if we want to take the, take food out of the equation, there's one way that, and out of the annual argument about taxation, this could be our year to do it, if we do this. And that's all, that's all I'm talking about. And I'm not suggesting we do that. I think we have enough means, and if we do Option B3, it's 1.9 million in six months, I'm just, this is me, I'm assuming that 50% of those funds would come from local. If we were to do a half a cent sales tax across the board year round, we'd generate 1.475. And we'd probably get, I mean, again, this is me, the same amount of funds from locals, close to the $800,000, $900,000, unless we get less money from the people who are, you know, the main economy that we have. I think we should take advantage of that economy.
All right, anybody else interested in B3?
Your Honor?
Yes.
And one of the reasons why I favor that is when we go into the winter months, when we talk about heating oil and all this other kind of stuff, it makes more sense, the locals will benefit from the fact that the majority of the taxes that cover the services will be gathered during tourist season. You know, where, where they've already, you know, don't have the heating issues or anything like that.
Okay, if we haven't heard anything else, we're gonna direct management on B3. Well, the motion was this direction, wasn't it?
Your Honor, I move we adopt Option B3.
Well, we already got a motion on the table.
Oh, okay.
I, yeah, I'm just looking for direction. Hey, Carl, your direction is B3. All right, that brings us to wastewater. We have a motion.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council to direct staff to prepare an ordinance adjusting 2014 wastewater rates effective March the 1st, 2014, as determined appropriate by the City Council. Said ordinance to be considered at the City Council meeting December 19th, 2013.
Carl, refresh me on the wastewater, was that four percent?
Second.
Oh, moved in second, that was the four percent?
That was the, what we presented with the alternative budget, Mr. Mayor, in the interim, you have funded a capital project on Ravetman Way that will draw your reserves down to about 90,000. In light of that, I would recommend a 10% increase be considered.
Hey, Bob, can we have you up here for a minute? So can you give us wastewater, what the actual numbers will be for people, if we, for both options?
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna have to get back to you, I, I don't have those numbers with me, I'm sorry.
You don't know, at four percent, you don't know how many dollars that is?
Oh, dollars?
That's a-
Oh, okay, sure. The four percent would generate about 95,000. And 10% would generate about 250,000.
Okay, Mike, I guess, you'll have to get the, I'm just wondering, how many, you know, my bill, how many more dollars is that gonna be?
That's what I thought you were asking, I don't have that information, and I, I can get them for you.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Bob?
I think one thing that would be helpful too, Bob, is in, I mean, we, could you get the two new council members the rate study that we did, so they can get us the speed on what that talks about in a way of rate designs and what they find with our current situation?
All right. Any direction on the four, there, originally it was four, now they're recommending 10. What's the council? Want to direct the management on that?
Let's do four, and then when we get the numbers in, we can adjust it to 10 at the meeting on the 19th, if it looks like that would be not too onerous, just to start the discussion.
You can do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's do that, give us the four number, and then we'll go from there with the, with the information from Bob, unless there's any objection from the council. See, and then that's the direction we'll give. The next one is, Matt, you brought up, you wanted to raise that cap. Did you want to give any direction to management, see if you had four votes from the council to go in that direction?
I thought we moved in-
Did we already vote? We already passed it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I, I think they didn't vote on it.
That's right.
Okay, so it is passed, we come up to ordinance, and we'll see what happens on that, okay.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I would like to have staff talk to the borough.
They've already got this in place, correct, Matt? They've already passed it, and the ordinance is, is it will take effect once the city adopts the same, if I understand it correctly.
And, and I've heard concerns about how it affects. And if, if we want to exempt rent, I think that we should have that discussion and maybe see if the boroughs
Yeah, my-
Go ahead.
Well, I'm, like before, I'm against doing it, especially now if we're going to raise the sales tax during the summer. I'd hate to do that to the downtown merchants too, so, myself, I've, I'm still against doing the cap altogether, so. Go ahead.
In terms of the cap, I guess I just wonder how that affects some of the folks in the tourist industry who sell, you know, fishing tours and stuff, don't they have to pay for that in advance? And would that mean those people have to pay all that money out of their pocket when it's time?
If they've already sold the tour or whatever.
I don't know how that works as government, and I've had a lot of people calling for rent.
That's one of the reasons I'm against it. All right.
Well, the, the tour thing shouldn't be affected by-
If they've-
A fishing tour should not be affected by the cap.
It shouldn't be?
It should, I, I don't believe fishing tours are a thousand, I mean, you pay per person if it's a $400.
But if you're coming in to stay at a lodge, and you're paying like $4,000 or whatever it is, $3,000, and you're paying that in advance, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, the cap is on a single item, so, a great, the great example is, I can go buy a $15,000 car, and I pay sales tax up to $1,000 on that car. I can go buy $15,000 worth of windows, and each window costs $1,000. I pay sales tax on all $15,000, all 15 windows.
So you're saying in that tour, they would pay on the, on each individual item and not the total cost of it, is what you're saying? That's not how they would-
Bob, can you get us a clarification on that? All right, and then, water rates. We have a 15% water rate posed, we, we haven't voted on that yet, have we, Carl?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a motion to, or do you need a mo, motion for that, or?
My understanding was-
If you have it in the budget, so if we approve the budget, you'll bring it to us in an ordinance. Oh, no, it's not in the budget.
My understanding-
We'll be burning it until he brings back the stuff on-
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay. So let's bring that up on the, the 19th. Correct, Carl, are we on the same page?
My understanding is, Councilman Verseverston wanted to see an interim rate relative to the commercial users, that would be based on a metered rate. Well, I would probably come back with then, depending on what schedule John and Bob develop, is an ordinance that will derive the same amount of revenue from the 15% across the board, one component being the commercial metered rate, and whatever the balance is that isn't derived from that would be a residential increase, remove the 15.
Can you get it to the 19th, or do you want to make it an ordinance in January?
I really think we need to try to get it for you on the meeting on the 19th.
If we can't, we'll let you know, shall be said, shall be done. I have nothing else. Does anybody have anything else? And, and when we have the, the meeting again on the 19th, to talk about this, if you have any last minute amendments or changes, it's the time to bring it up. And I'll probably be talking to some of you guys beforehand, with everybody's concerns, and maybe things they might want to do or not, so I make sure I have a list, so we make sure we cover them all if you have any. Do we have a motion to, what do we do, reset, I mean, defer to the 19th?
Yes.
Do we have a second? So moved. I think we're at council member comments. KJ?
I think I got a two-part comment, or two comments, I don't know if it is. And I'm just rounding these figures up, because for the library and the fire department, we're talking half a million bucks each, every year. It's not in our budget, we're talking about raising sales tax half a cent, we're talking about five percent here, maybe 15% on wastewater and all the water and all this kind of stuff. Jeez, I mean, gosh, guys, and I have, I mean, I'm almost to the point of throwing out my hands, going, jeez, just take it all out of reserves and screw it. But we can't do that, because we're gonna have any reserves pretty soon. But just want everybody, when we're thinking about all this, just to remember, you're talking a half a percent on sales tax. Everybody in town, I don't see what we're gonna, we're gonna not charge on groceries, we're not gonna charge on oil or, you know, that kind of stuff. Plus increases in all these utility rates, it might only be $3 on one and $2 on the other, but by the time you get done, you're talking 10, 15 bucks to everybody every month. Not to mention what they spend on, and that's a lot of money for a lot of folks. Gosh, I just don't want to be part of that. But I don't think we have a choice, because I'm not willing to take all this money and just deplete our reserves. That's all I can say. Wow.
Bob?
Yeah, Your Honor, I think one of the things that would be nice, so that we have an idea of the effect of all this stuff, is we have a known cost for garbage rates, sewer rates, water rates, to our residential customers, single-family residential. And we have probably an average cost of utilities. Can we get a matrix, a spreadsheet, that shows what it's costing them per month? And then when we make a change, what it's costing them per month? I think that'd be a good thing to have for our, for our- One of the things that the public hasn't seen is, there's a real interesting graph here that shows the different utilities and stuff, and how they, the trends in the Consumer Price Index in regards to them, how they've gone up. Telephone stayed fairly flat, natural gas has been up and down and all over the place. Electricity has had a slow gain and has gone up, the CPI itself has gone up. But the water and sewer rates have gone right out of the window. And we just, we'll, I rock it up, and a lot of that, I think, is due to unfunded mandates, that the governments and regulations have put on it. And plus, a lot of this stuff has been in the ground for a long, long time, and now it's starting to fail. And we had a failure just here recently, and right, and no, it's not, I don't think it was due to corrosion, it was still a failure of a cash irrigation structure. Lost 350,000 gallons, I have no clue what that's gonna cost to repair. But if we don't, if we do crisis management, this stuff's gonna show up more and more. We need to really, and we don't want to go out and just replace everything, I know that's not possible, but we need to prioritize and, and do what we need to do, because it's still under the ground, and still, you have, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Judy? Russell?
I'm good.
Matt?
Yeah, I just, I'll piggyback on what Bob said. We, we've got infrastructure in there, and it's, some of this infrastructure is old. And we're in the spot where we, and I, I, it's been one of the things I've focused on, is making sure that we get a good replacement. And we're at that stage now where we have to have a schedule and put it in place, put it in action. And hopefully with these increases, we can catch up to where we can lower again in the future. But we have to do something now, otherwise, public safety's gonna be at risk. The economy of this town's gonna be at risk, and, you know, I've said this as well, my wife and I chose to raise our children here for a reason, and because of all the positives that this community brings to a family's life. And I want my children to have the same option to make that discussion, or that decision, if they so choose. Lastly, we've gotten a couple of communications, and there have been one or two letters in Sit News regarding the amounts of money that we have budgeted this year. I believe one letter stated we have a, we had a billion dollars in, in payments coming due over the next 30 years. I really, I really encourage people to, and I, I appreciate all letters, because they make me go back and look, but I really encourage people to take a look at our budget documents. When you talk about the city having a budget of around $80 million, we have to make sure that we separate city and KPU, because they're two different entities. We have, I don't know if it's the pleasure of serving both, or not, because there are times we here confuse it. But it's very important that, that the public understand that we have those two entities, and they are completely separate, and so combined, yes, they have an annual budget of around $80 million, but separate, they do not. And, and the other one, I'm, I'm not sure where the billion dollars came from. But I encourage people to look at the letters, if you read the letters, to then go into the documents on, and they are posted. But I encourage people to look at the letters, if you read the letters, to then go into the documents on, and they are posted. Correct, Carl? They're on the website, please go and look at the documents. Numbers can be fun, and I encourage you to do it.
Marty?
I'm good.
All right. Um, the only thing I have to say, and I know people have come here and worry about rate increases and mill, and talk about us being big spenders. You know, this is the most conservative group of government people I know. We spent, until last year, when we raised the mill rate five tenths of a mil, that was the first increase in 20 years. We're looking at our first ever sales tax rate increase in over 20 years. We've been very conservative and very good at our spending for 20 years. And we've hit a place where we're going to, we've had to make some changes. And it's not because we're spending frivolously, and, um, we're doing the, um, in some things, of all the people, they voted to have us build a new fire department, which was needed, and a new, um, library, which was needed, as we look at the building that we're dealing with now. And, um, community members made those decisions, and we're working our best to make it as less impact as possible. This is a very, very conservative government. I am a very, very conservative conservative. And I, so I take, um, I want to make sure everybody knows where we're coming from in the history of this body, which has been very, um, well-run. And I, I give tribute, all the credit to the staff, from, um, Carl to Bob, to the heads of the departments, to the employees. We're not a frivolous organization, and I never would, I'd fight like crazy if I ever was, because that's not what I'm made out of. I am not a tax and spend liberal. And the group here, we've had liberals, we've had conservatives, we've had all your different array of people sitting at this table over those 20 years, over the 26 years I've been here. And everybody has come together and has been very good at being, um, watching what we do in the way of spending and, and doing our business here. And we've done this business really well, and we haven't had a lot of people come up here and complain about how we've been doing the business, because they've been trusting us. And we, we're going to continue to earn that trust. And when people come and ask us what we're doing and why, we'll explain it to them. And one things we are facing now in the future, because 26 years ago, it wasn't a problem, but now, 26 years later, water, sewer, wastewater, storm drains, infrastructure is a problem. And it's coming due. And a lot of this stuff is real, real old, and we'll work our best to make sure that we try to get it paid for by grants and other options, so it doesn't come on to just our, um, residents here. But our residents, um, you know, we're residents, and it's our city, and we're going to have to contribute no matter how we like it, because we need to have those infrastructures for this community. Uh, but one thing we won't do is be frivolous, and, um, I, I mean, that's my number one thing when I got into this, is to make sure that we're doing, um, the spending correctly for this community. And, um, we have, and I think our 20-year history of it, um, shows that. And I appreciate the community's support for us, and we're here looking out as best we can for, um, our residents. So that's all I have to say. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Your Honor?
Yes.
One more thing, and I was going to ask you, if you could contact Mr. Dial and have him, if he's willing to give us the notes that he did. I thought some of those were interesting, and I'm not going to remember them all.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.